I'd like to call the July 22 meeting of the Richfield Planning Commission to order. In a moment, we'll have the open forum. If you wish to participate, you may call in by dialing 415-655-0001. That's 415-655-0001, using the webinar access code 26319972846 and the password 1234. Also, online on the agendas that are available on the city's website, there are other ways to submit comments. With that being said, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Commissioner Canely so moved.
Commissioner Charlton, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Is that all minutes or just the previous? Are we approving all of the minutes?
That was, that was the plan. Should we, do we want to split it down?
No, no, I was just clarifying.
Okay.
So, all three minutes.
Correct. I mean, we can split it.
No, I was just clarifying.
All right, so to clarify, to approve, I understand the motion to be, a motion to approve the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting from May 29th, the joint city council and planning commission work session on the 25th, and the joint city council and planning commission work session of July 9th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now is the time for the open forum. The open forum is a time for residents to address the planning commission matters generally, not before the planning commission on the agenda tonight. I did offer the ways to dial in remotely. Has anyone, have we received any calls or emails?
Chair and Commissioners, there's nobody on the line at this time.
Is there anyone present here to address during the open forum? Please approach the podium and sign in. You might need a new pen.
All right, so hi, my name is Andy Carlisle. I'm the owner of Carlisle Auto Service, 7544 Lindale Avenue South, doing business as Richfield BP. Just a few concerns I have, you're going to put an automotive shop in my parking lot. I don't know if anybody is aware of that or not. We just, well, I got my three minutes. We just had a business there that created a ruckus. The alley was always plugged up, they made tons of noise. When you tried to leave my business, you could not see out the exit because the lawn care business had the street plugged up. There was just no parking. There's no parking, there's no space. So, if we put an auto shop there, where are we going to get the new parking from? Where are the new spaces going to come from? We didn't have them before, where are we going to get them in the future? Because there's just no parking.
Sir, I take it to understand that you have comments about the variance, the hearing we're going to have for a repair shop at 7524 Lindale, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We will, we are scheduled to have an open hearing for that, and there will be a time for you to share your comments during that hearing if you, if all your comments are regarding that.
Yeah, it's all directed toward, well, I thought this was the open forum and we'll still might need a new pen up here, though, it's still dead.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve, seeing no one else here to provide open forum testimony, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the rest of the meeting.
Commissioner Serra moves to approve the agenda for the rest of the meeting.
Commissioner Charlton, seconds.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That being said, the first item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider a request for a conditional use permit in variances for an auto repair shop at 7524 Lindale Avenue South. Could we please have the staff report?
Yes, thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Stall One Automotive is proposing to operate an auto repair shop at the former Barrett Lawn Care property located at 7524 Lindale Avenue South. Auto mechanical or body repair shops are a conditional use in the C2 General Commercial District, and they are subject to conditions listed in the zoning code. The applicant is unable to meet two out of seven of the criteria listed in the zoning code, both related to minimum buffer yards. The applicant is unable to meet minimum buffer yard requirements mainly due to the unusual layout of the building and site as related to the overall size of the site. In other words, the building does not meet front setback requirements and its size relative to the lot leaves very little room for parking, landscaping, and buffer yards. This presents a practical difficulty in complying with the 25-foot residential buffer and 15-foot abutting partial buffer. Full variances from both requirements, as discussed in the policy section below, are reasonable. Improvements will be made on site with regard to screening and the addition of bike racks in front of the property. Non-conforming aspects of the property such as setbacks and impervious surface may continue but will not worsen. In the absence of required buffer yards, staff recommend multiple mitigative measures as conditions of approval as stated in the attached resolution. This would include a requirement that vehicular circulation be retained on site, that the drive aisle remain free of cars to provide for adequate site circulation, and that the LED for deliveries and other occasional use only, and will not be relied upon for customer site access. If you have any questions, I could probably answer them, or if you'd like to hear from the applicant, he's also here.
Are there any questions for staff before we hear from the applicant? All right.
Staff, there was something in the report about a subdivision of the lot. Can you kind of clarify exactly what's going on? I don't think I was quite following that.
Yeah, so it is pretty complicated. So, basically, if you look at the location and zoning map, you'll see that I kind of marked off a different square to what would be considered the entire property. And that entire property used to be all, it used to be considered one. It used to be lots eight and nine, which are the ones that are, we're talking about today that will, we are proposing, or the applicant is proposing to operate the car repair shop. And the southern lot was lot 10. It was under the city's assumption for a very long time that all those three lots were, were combined as one. And a few months ago, we basically found out that they're not actually one, one lot, one unified lot. They're all separate, and they were actually only combined through tax combination. They weren't actually combined through, like, what we would consider a legal combination. So, the southern lot, lot 10, was basically sold off. And we talked to our real estate attorney, and they reviewed the deeds for lots eight and nine, which are the two lots that we're talking about today. And the real estate, our real estate attorney basically concluded that those two lots are not combined legally either, basically meaning that, I mean, they technically could be sold off. And at that point, like, the, they obviously wouldn't, they wouldn't be in accordance with the zoning code, they wouldn't meet minimum lot requirements, it just, it wouldn't make sense. You also would only have a building with no parking. So, what we're basically putting as a condition of approval is to have those two lots finally legally combined through a minor subdivision and combination.
Okay, so, just so I'm clear, when I'm looking at Google Street View, the lot that we're discussing is the one that with the Barrett sign, with the garage door, brick facade, and then directly to the north of that, which is just kind of setback, there's like a wall and then some just parking behind it or whatever.
Yes, correct.
And the one that's not included is the, kind of the tan building with, I don't know how you describe it, with two doors. So, like, are they, they're all owned by the same person?
They used, they used to be, but not anymore. The, the southern lot that is not included in this request anymore was sold off a few months ago.
Okay, so you mentioned combining them, I'm confused.
Yeah, so there's basically different levels of combinations for...
Oh, we're combining the top, the northern two?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha, that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, I thought you were talking about the...
No, it's okay, it's very, it's, yeah, it's very complicated.
Well, I follow now, yeah, that makes sense, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Hui and Planner Via, thanks for that, too. So, it's three, three properties, not three properties, one owner of three lots, the northernmost two lots, or whatever we're discussing here today, proposing to be combined, the southernmost lot was sold and is no longer the same ownership?
Correct, yes. It was also, it was sold and it was also separated through a tax separation, which...
Just, just the two, then?
Yes.
Got it, okay, so, and so my other question then, which, I think you know what I was going to ask, is, so I'm glad you clarified that. My other question was going to be, I noticed in the, in the site plan, I see is that there's, appears to be, will be a shared, not quite a shared driveway, but a shared approach off of Lindale Avenue between this property and the property to the north, which is the Oriental Market Grocery Store. Seeing that this is shared, have the relevant folks at the Oriental Market been consulted on this? Do we know how they feel about this? Or is there some sort of precedent for how a shared approach like this might, might be operated or accommodated?
Yeah, so I, I'll just mention really quickly, I, we haven't, staff hasn't spoken to the owners of the Oriental Market Grocery Store, but I know the applicant has been in communication with them, I wouldn't be able to tell you the details, but I know there has been discussion between them. They were also within the mailing notice, and as far as shared, shared access, we would consider that basically non-conforming. It's been that way for a very long time, so we, we are adding as a condition of approval that the applicant either shows evidence of a shared access agreement between those, those two properties. I, I haven't been able to find any in the paper, in our files, so I wouldn't, I'm not sure if it exists, but we're also asking that the applicant attempts to get a shared access agreement. And we're wording it that way because it could be considered a non-conforming part of, of the project where it's existed for so long that, you know, like, we wouldn't require that the applicant get a whole new access, like, it, yeah.
I understand that the applicant or representative is here, if you wanted to approach the podium and sign in. If you have any remarks, and then we may have some questions from Commissioners.
Hello?
If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Sam Buckner, I live at 8243 13th Avenue South. So, my current shop is in Bloomington right now, 1009 West 80th Street in Bloomington here, just on the other side of the highway here, so. Yeah, so that building was sold, five tenants had to get out, and so we are looking for a new spot. And so, we like this spot, we like a lot about the spot, and so that is why we're interested.
Do you have any questions from the Commission? All right, thank you very much. Is it all right if we do come up with some questions that we call you back later?
Yes, please.
All right. So, if there are members of the public who wish to speak to this, please go ahead and say your name again for us and...
Hi, I'm Andy Carlisle, owner of Carlisle Auto Service Incorporated, doing business as Richfield BP. I've been serving the Richfield corner there for 25 years. I know there's a transmission shop right down the street from me, on one block away. Richfield Honda is just another block away. I just don't see why we're trying to make this automotive repair shop fit where we don't need it. We could probably put something else in there. If I grabbed an old Yellow Pages, there's probably like a thousand businesses in there that would fit into this spot instead of an auto repair facility. And the only reason I'm saying this is because we had a lawn care facility there just recently, and it caused an extreme mess. I don't know why none of the residents in the alley are not here, but alls they heard is this noise constantly all day long and all night long, because it's, you can't do business in an alleyway. An alleyway is a narrow passage to get to your backyard or your garage. It is not a place to do business at. And then, over the 25 years, I've never done business in the alley. I have a car wash entrance that comes around my building and stays on my property. I don't ask my customers to come down in the alley to use my business, because that's not what the alley's for. So, that's all I'm saying. And then the parking on Aldridge Avenue during the last business that was there was insane. I don't know why any of those people aren't here, because they had cars parked in front of their houses daily, and nobody's here saying anything. So, I'm, alls I'm suggesting is instead of trying to make this business fit where it's not really zoned, let's really try to find a business that's going to fit in there and really make our neighborhood great, is all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to for this hearing? Commissioner Via, did we receive any comments beforehand or electronically about this?
Chair, we did not.
I would take, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Serra so moved.
Commissioner Charlton, second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, discussion, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I had a couple of follow-up questions for staff, if that's okay. Can you speak to, so, so the current use, they, they meet the parking requirements currently? Is that correct? It's just the setbacks that are the issue?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Can you speak to the intent of the, of the setbacks and kind of what the real-world impacts of, of that actually is?
Sorry, do you, you mean the buffer yards?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the intent of it, I'm, I'm not sure that I'd be able to really give, like, a definite answer. I guess I'd have to go back and really see what the history of those conditions are, but I would imagine it's to mitigate noise and any other unwanted effects of a car repair shop, which are legitimate concerns, noise, odor, things like that. So, I guess from that standpoint, it's just basically seen as things that would help to mitigate the effects of such a use. I would kind of point you towards some of the conditions that we've listed in the resolution as part of the conditional use permit. In absence of the, the buffer yards, we're proposing some pretty strict conditions in regards to, like, the use of the alley, the, the way that access on the site will, will occur. We also have a condition about overflow of parking onto residential streets, and that's actually a direct response to the prior use that was here. We are aware that there was overflow of parking onto residential streets. So, I would say that, yeah, buff, the buffer yards are important, but I would also say that the conditions we, we are putting on there are pretty strict, and I think they'll be adequate.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Anyone else?
Yes, so I, I heard the concern about the alleyway parking situation, the use of the alley, and I think there are some conditions here in the resolution about screening in the alley and fencing. Could you elaborate on exactly, just, just, I read it several, just for everybody here, could you elaborate a little bit more on what those requirements will be for the alleyway, fencing and screening?
Yeah, so there will be a fence along the, along pretty much half of the rear of the property, directly along, along the northern part of the property. It will be six-foot opaque privacy screening fence, and there will also be fencing towards the front of the property, and that's to basically meet the other parts of the buffer yard conditions that, that can't be met, which is actual distance of the buffer yard, but we're trying to meet the, the other requirements, which, which are screening requirements, so that's another part of that, it will be the screen fence. So, yeah, there will be screening in back along the alley, at least, at least half of the property, and then the other half will remain open mainly because that's where the entrance to the building is, for the garage. So, though any other way to get fencing there would be to basically entirely, to entirely relocate the entrance to the garage of the building, which isn't really reasonable.
Did you have a question? All right, Stessa.
I'm reading here in the, the conditions of the permit that, like, the garage doors need to be closed while the cars are being worked on, and that there's no parking off, on the street. You know, some, some, I think, very relevant conditions that speak to some of the concerns we heard in the public hearing. What happens if, if those conditions aren't met? What happens if there's continuous work with the garage doors open, or if cars are parked on the street overnight on a regular basis? Like, what is the, what, what can the neighbors do if they see that situation occurring?
Well, we, first, obviously, they'd, they'd put in a complaint with us, and the way our code enforcement works is it's complaint-based, so that, that would probably be the best way, but if staff noticed it, we'd, we'd also address it, but basically it would start off as sending violation letters to the, to the business owner, or to the owner, actually, the property owner. And if that didn't work, it would eventually go to prosecution, and we may even revoke the conditional use permit, but it's a process, and it's not something that, like, automatically, you know, there's one complaint and we automatically revoke the conditional use permit. We try to work with business owners and property owners and see how to figure things out, and yeah.
But there, I, I think, for the sake of neighbors and community members, the city does have a robust process for handling concerns where a business is not following their, the conditions of their permit, correct?
Yes, there is, yeah, there is a means to, to get compliance, yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, I, I do hear what was said in the public hearing, and I agree that the, I, I do live in the neighborhood, actually, quite close to this area, and I do agree with the sentiment that the previous business, there were vehicles parked in inconvenient places and sometimes intruding on entrances and causing a nuisance at times, to be honest. So, I, I have seen this firsthand, and I do agree that that was, that, that was an issue affecting neighbors in the neighborhood. I do think that what's being proposed in the conditions here is okay, generally speaking. I, I like the idea that a fence and screening would be required in the alley in the back of the business to better delineate the perimeters of that, of that business, so that there isn't that kind of spillover into the alleyway, because I think, and I know from firsthand observation that that was happening before, that there being no, no perimeters, there were vehicles and maintenance and other things happening in areas where they, they really shouldn't have been, and even spilling out onto Lindale, causing those negative impacts to the neighbors nearby. So, I think the conditions laid out here are sufficient, but I do understand where they're coming from, and I think the city has, has, has addressed those, and I'm hopeful that we can come to a reasonable, a reasonable accommodation here.
With that, I guess, I, like, is this, just to refer back to some of the comments we heard, that it's not like we're rezoning this site for this use, this is a use that just requires a conditional use permit. I think it is an appropriate use of the site. I think that the, the buffer issues that we have are not being created by this proposal, they are an existing situation. So, and I am hopeful that the conditions on the permit address the issues that the previous business created in the community, so I am supportive of this conditional use permit, and I would recommend approval of a conditional use permit in variances to allow for an auto repair shop at 7524 Lindale Avenue South.
Yeah, I just want to say, I too am pleased, it looks like the city staff and the applicant spent significant time considering these, and the, I mean, the conditions are detailed, the drawings we have are very detailed, and I do think on Lindale Avenue, this is a very appropriate type of business for that location, and I, I, I feel like I would support that as well. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just a question. I do appreciate the well-thought-out design of the traffic flow. My question to staff is, how will these measures, right, we've got a lot of conditions for this, how will it be enforced and monitored? Do we want to have a check-in after a couple of months, after a couple of weeks, to see how it's going, and reassess, and see if we need to redesign traffic flow going into and out of the business?
Yeah, so the way it works is typically with, when, when we, I guess, grant land use approvals, there's typically things that the applicant has to do prior to a certificate of occupancy or prior to opening, or prior to some timeline, and sometimes those things aren't finished. So, then we usually collect an escrow, I guess it's getting into the details, but basically, yes, we do follow up with, when a business has opened, when, when we have given land use approvals, yes, we, we basically follow up to make sure things like, in this case, like, the physical things such as the fencing and the screening are done, landscaping is done. So, at that time, we, we would also check up on, you know, how the, how, how it's working, how the site is working. And then there's obviously the complaint-based system that we have for code enforcement as well.
And another quick question, just looking at the design, do you know if the applicant took into consideration... took into consideration like capacity based on current business volume, or what types of things did they consider when determining the number of parking stalls and flow?
Do you mean the, well, the, the parking stalls, the parking requirement comes out of the zoning code, based on what we require on car repair shops. And there's some notes in the report, but basically the requirement for this property would be ten parking stalls, but the transit reduction reduces it to nine. And then there are two on-street parking stalls directly in front of the building that our code allows the applicant to use as part of a reduction in the parking requirement. So basically, all of that is to say that we kind of decided the parking, the parking.
So it's solely based on just zoning legal requirements and not like a time study of the business itself, like knowing how much business they generate and cars going in and out and stuff like that?
I think the, for, for this use of parking requirement, it's kind of worked into the requirement, because the code says that you need, you need four as a base for a car repair shop, and then you need two per service stall, and there's three service stall, there would be three service stalls for this car repair shop. So I think it's kind of worked into the, to the requirements already. But sometimes an applicant can submit like a parking study to, to indicate how much parking they, they need if they want a reduction in parking, but that's not the case here, because they, they meet the, they meet the requirement, yeah.
Chair and Commissioners, if I could, if I could also add on to that, that this is a basically like a type of a business that could be run by appointment. So the owner of the business does have control over the flow of the cars coming in, and if he can't fit people into his schedule, because he's already got the maximum number of cars for his, his lot, and, and he started to overflow, we would be looking to him to regulate his business to fit within the site that he desired to be at.
Okay, thank you. That's the answer that I wanted.
Could I ask a quick question of the applicant, sir?
Yeah, if you, if you would, please.
I, I just wanted to ask, you've been operating in Bloomington for several years, correct?
Correct.
In that time, have you ever received any code violations or notices from the city about not following the conditions that Bloomington has laid out for you?
No, not a single one.
All right, thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just kind of a follow-up to, to the other Commissioner's question. You know, in a situation where you did have, you know, a need for more space than you have here, like how would you, you know, what would you do in that case? Can you kind of talk us through the process?
Um, there's, yeah, there's a lot of parking inside also, and so there's probably room for another ten cars inside the building. So I have, I have three stalls, and then there's, you know, the whole hundred and ten feet also, all the way through where I could put cars at if needed to be also. So that would be the plan. And then at nighttime, a lot of, we bring a lot of our cars in, inside overnight anyways, you know, so. But yeah, that'd be the plan, is to get, to, to move them inside if needed to be. So there's a lot of room. There's forty-four hundred square feet, so it's, it's a pretty big shop, so.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question as well. Just, I'm not super familiar with auto repair shops. Do you typically have an agreement with a customer to pick up their car by a certain date?
There is, yes. So in my notice, it is, it is two days, so forty-eight hours, yep. So, and I know the city's, is ninety-six hours, I believe, is what they have here, and so I'm pretty strict about that too. I don't want cars on the, on the lot looking stale. It's kind of one of my pet peeves here, is to get the cars in and out. I don't want, I don't want the place looking stale, so, yeah.
If there are no other comments from commissioners, we could have a motion to approve the recommended staff action.
Commissioner Strosha, I'm making a motion to recommend approval. I thought I did this earlier, and I don't think I actually have some words.
No.
So I'm making a motion to recommend approval of a conditional use permit and variances to allow for an auto repair shop at seventy-five, twenty-four Lyndale Avenue South.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Hui seconds.
All those in favor of taking, of, of sending this recommendation forward, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much. Liaison reports. City, Community Services Advisory Commission.
So the commission reported on park building rentals restarting after eight years, saying that staff took inventory, determined conditions, and opened up rentals for three of the enclosed buildings. They received good feedback on the rentals we've had so far this year, and they anticipate a lot of great usage this year. They feel, they fill a need for weekend usage of a building for events like small birthday parties, coworking spaces, and food preparation space. It's also been floated as a potential place for programming for Woodlake while that undergoes construction. And then Woodlake renovation project planning is well underway. They received four responses for construction manager at-risk RFPs. They've also completed wetland delineation, which revealed that they actually have more room to build than they originally anticipated, had an open house that served a hundred attendees, and began site concept and design meetings.
The city council, in its last few meetings, obviously it's had the work, the work sessions with, with the planning commission. There's also was evaluations of the city manager's performance, but I, I wanted to especially highlight that at the last two meetings, there were positive comments about recommendations that the planning commission had made to ordinance and to approval. So I, I was pleased to see that our, that our process is working, and that it seems like our deliberations are, are being taken seriously by the city council. So I think, I think that's to do with the good work that the staff, the information the staff gives us, and, and all of our work together. So I was really pleased to, to see that at the last two council meetings. Housing and redevelopment authority.
HRA approved a preliminary development agreement with JO companies for the forty units of affordable housing on sixty-five oh-one and sixty-five, twenty-five Penn Avenue. So this is just to indicate that they are willing to, it sounds like request assistance from the HRA for a total of one point five million. Most of that is in the land cost and what the city, or what the HRA would sell the land for. But the JO is, companies is just about, it sounds like, to submit an application for additional funding, and so we'll see how that application, how it rates. But the HRA did approve the preliminary development agreement for that project that we've talked about.
School board.
Thank you, Chair. June twenty-fourth, the superintendent presented to the school board, and the budget for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five was reviewed. At the school board's July fifteenth meeting, Health Services Supervisor Michelle Whiteside presented, and Superintendent Yunavsky shared data related to board goals, and the board discussed their self-evaluation.
So the Transportation Commission, I believe it was last week, along with Richfield Public Works and Hennepin County, held an open house at the community center discussing the recommended layout of Nicola Avenue for proposed reconstruction between Sixty-Sixth Street and Seventy-seventh Street in twenty-twenty-six. The new design included one lane each way with a center turn lane and sidewalks with one-way bike lanes on each side, as well as roundabouts proposed where the signalized intersections currently are, as well as that Seventy-third Street. There seemed to be good attendance. I attended this, this meeting at well, as well, and I'm sure staff received robust feedback on that. So that is the ongoing outreach process through the city and the Transportation Commission on Nicola Avenue. Thanks.
The Chamber of Commerce?
I have nothing to report this minute.
June meeting was canceled, so nothing to report.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the city planner's report.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I really don't have much to report at this time, except that Ruby was promoted to planner. So yay. If, she's awesome, she's awesome support, if at all. I look halfway decent. It's usually because of what a great help she's been, so.
All right, our next meeting is scheduled for August twenty-sixth. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Charlton moves to adjourn.
Commissioner Hui seconds.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned.